All right, this evening's Capital Facilities Committee is called to order. With me this evening is Ms. Walsh, Superintendent Murphy's here, Matt Cashman's here. We're expecting one more board member shortly. Jim Richards will be joining us, and I'm Bob Cotton. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Bob. As always, we have our location where you can find a copy of this presentation online. We want to cover a couple of things, more from an update standpoint of kind of where we're at. We're finishing the year out, December coming to a close, not rushing it at all, but we wanted to talk a little bit about Runlet Middle School Project, where we are currently, the timeline for the RFQ, talk a little bit about Legislative Service Requests, LSRs, and then Kathleen and I talked, it would be good, just to, we don't, we're not going to get in the weeds on it, but we just kind of want to talk through upcoming projects that we would be looking at as part of the budget in summer projects, and so just kind of warming everybody up to, you know, things we're looking at. So if you notice the animation on the screen, it looks like snow. We're not getting any, but.
Knock wood.
What was that? Knock on wood? Okay, all right. I thought someone was trying to get in.
Sorry.
So, quick overview, we sent out the request for qualifications on Friday, November 18th. This coming Friday, we have invited architects. We made it a public process, we invited four architects, and we expect more to come, but it's going to be a mandatory walkthrough, and what we would do during that is log everybody in, do some intros, it's going to, we're going to do it at Runlet, and then we would do a walkthrough through the school, but the primary goal of it is to get everybody in the room, talk through the process, get their names, their emails, so that if during this process, if people have questions, they, we establish an email team, the common questions are addressed to us, and then we answer as a group, so everybody has a fair advantage.
So, just a question on that, so at this point, you have at least four, you think?
At least four, but it's a public process, and I think that I'd expect more people to...
Good.
How did you select the four?
I, naturally, the firm that we had used, HMFH, but I took, I chose La Valley Brenzinger, which is a New Hampshire firm, Banwell White, which is New Hampshire, Vermont line, and Marinese Architects that are, you know, here in New Hampshire as well. So, again, we posted it on the Concord Monitor, we put it online, we've had public presentations talking about that we were going to lead to do a RFQ. I have not received any outside phone calls, but I do anticipate that we'll, we should get a good amount of firms, and, you know, again, our walkthrough is going to start with a brief introduction, so we're planning on doing it in a classroom. If, I'm going to talk to the principal, Paulette, if it tends to be even bigger, we'll try to find another room in the school, but I think it's good for any firms that we're looking to pre-qualify, that they come and they actually see the physical building as well.
Okay, that's, at what time on Friday?
That'll be one o'clock this Friday.
Okay. Good.
We also were talking, so we know the ranking process, the structure came out, we were ranked fourth out of seventeen. Maybe in the future, if we want to entertain this, I know Amy Clark at the DOE has volunteered to come and discuss more about the building aid process and what number four means as opposed to one, and the monies available, so that, that might just be something that we might want to consider, maybe in January, when we have a Capital Facilities Committee meeting, just to have her come, talk, and present, that will be something we can...
I think that would be great. I'd love to learn more and try to figure out how we can influence the process to get more.
Okay, me too. So, again, a snapshot, this was actually on the RFQ, but it just talks about, again, the release of the RFQ, the pre, the meeting that we're going to have on Friday, and then it walks through formal dates of what we would expect to look for after that. Questions, the qualifications due on January 17th, we would engage in starting to prescreen those firms around February 17th, and then we'd look for potential interview dates. We tried to, we're forecasting out into March, but we're trying to look at Thursdays because we are engaged in the budget process, and that's Monday and Wednesdays, so we know it's a busy schedule, but we figured that that would be a good, a good timeframe. And then where that takes us, we didn't put an actual date to award a contract, I think we need to go through this process in, in this fashion, that's what we're recommending.
Maybe a question for the superintendent, given where we are with, with school aid from the state, what is, what is your thinking about actually awarding contracts at this, at this point?
Well, obviously...
Too early to tell?
Yeah, it's a little early. I mean, you have, you have been wise in, in saving, over, you know, you have a capital improvement trust fund that you could use, so you're going to have to make that decision whether you want to move to that next step, while there's a lot of activity around seeing if we can secure additional funds via the legislative delegation, and Matt's going to review all the LSRs, because there are five, I believe, that are in process right now, so I think it's a decision the board will have to make, whether you want to take that next step.
Okay, thanks.
So, speaking of LSRs...
Matt, can we go back one? I didn't know if we mentioned, can we go back one? You and I talked about it.
Yep.
If we could go back one slide.
Okay, give me a...
Sorry, Matt.
That's okay.
I, I think we'll have some questions around the interview committee, the screening, that, that part of our plan, and so I need the board, we will need the board to think about, a board member to serve on that. Am I jumping, I'm not jumping ahead, am I, Matt?
No, I am, I am just trying to get back to the screen, which I think I did.
So that'd be in the prescreening and interview process?
Right, yeah, when you see those two sections, and so Matt and I talked about, you know, we want to have a committee to help us with that, so we'll be reaching out to some community partners that have been active and will participate, so we haven't done that yet, we've got a little bit of time, probably after the new year, we'll reach out and have some folks join Matt and Jack and I as we, you know, have those interviews with...
You're going to have community members as well?
Yeah, that's the message I want to be very clear, that this is where we're going to be asking folks for help, and especially those who have those kinds of qualifications, who just happens to be sitting over there very quietly.
Yeah, Nicole, keep going.
Did you miss my comment?
I did.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I just said that we will be reaching out to have folks in the community help us with the screening and interviewing of our architects, and there are certain people that we know have qualifications that could be very helpful to us, I just happened to scan over to you, so, anyway, just a thought.
Thank you.
So if that's okay, is that a...
That's, yeah, that's great, that's great, so that'll be in the February timeframe sometime.
Yeah, but I'll probably reach out in January and get that all squared away, that committee, and I'll keep you posted at, at a regular board meeting.
Mr. Richards just joined us, Jim, if you're willing, I'd like to appoint you as a temporary member of the committee so that we have a quorum.
Certainly, I'm willing.
I appreciate that. We're just in the process of kind of going over the timeline for the middle school project, and specifically the, the architecture RFQ process, so. Matt?
Okay, Jim, did you want to look at that, anything, and any questions, or I'll just move to the next slide? It's just a layout, it's, it's what we put in the RFQ, and it's just kind of our process going forward as we receive the requests for qualifications, and then certain steps that we'll be working through.
The superintendent just mentioned that they'll be looking in the, once it gets to the prescreening and interview phase, that they'll look for a board member and community members as well to be part of that committee to do that.
May I ask a question? So, is there expenditures associated with any of these steps, and if so, what approximately would they be?
Just other than the commitment of time right now, there, there's no out-of-pocket expenses for us. If we, you know, select a firm, I guess our next step would be send out an RFP, Request for Proposals, and then that would engage in a similar process, and then we would, if we decided at that point to select an architectural team, then we would be looking at...
Could you explain, so, for these interviewing the firms, they wouldn't be selected for the project after the interview process? It says contract, then we'd set out a separate request for proposals?
We can, on an RFQ, we're typically not going to see a fee cost on there. We're going to prescreen the, the architects, we can quickly engage, depending on the building aid model too, and the availability of it, then we could quickly engage into a RFP process. A lot of the information we'd be getting is comprised in the RFQ, what we're going to receive for those packages. Does that make sense, the way I explain that?
Not quite there yet, I'm sorry. So, what would we be awarding a contract for?
Through this process, we would say, this is the architect that we, as a group, we let, or this is a group of, we could make a shortlist out of it.
And then ask for proposals?
Then you can go out, go out for a proposal.
Thank you.
So, I think the, the effort here is that we want to continue with this process. We don't, regardless of the building aid, we don't want to suffer any delay, we want to be in the ready at any given time, is that...
Can I just add, oh, I'm sorry.
Don't, don't, you're...
Just add to that, that it's really important that we make sure that we have the right firm to do the work that is capable of doing a project this size, has experiences doing that, have the people on board, and the contacts in terms of all the folks, electrical, and all the phases of it, so the, the opportunity for RFQ process gives us that information.
Do we invite the Runlet Jetta Oyster River to...
La Valley Brenzinger, yes.
La Valley, yeah.
Yep.
I just love that school, it's beautiful.
I didn't get a chance to see it.
We can, we can go back.
So, just for clarification, and especially for anybody reading it, this is an RFQ process when we have a pre-proposal meeting, that's kind of a pre-quote meeting, and when we, proposals are due, those are RFQ quotes due, right?
So, if you're a firm, you're going to, you're going to read the RFQ, you're going to come in on Friday, you're going to tour the school, you're going to look to submit the RFQ, your, your, your architectural firm's package for review by the district, to, as Kathleen said, to prescreen and see who out there, this is a big project, and who out there is qualified to do it, and then we would, oh, go ahead.
So, just to clarify, maybe, I mean, RFQ is Request for Qualifications.
Qualifications.
So we're simply asking them to tell us what you've done in the past?
Exactly.
What your qualifications are, and then we can decide among those people which ones we think meet the standard?
Yes.
And, and then ask for an RFP, which is a Request for Proposal, which is where we actually get down to what's it going to cost us?
Right, and the RFP is going to have more detail, it's going to show the MEP firm that is part of the team as they come forward. So, this is a lengthy process, this isn't over at, you know, the end of this process, we would engage in the next process forward, but we, we feel it's a thoughtful, straightforward approach, it offers a lot of opportunity to take a look at a lot of different firms, and give us chances to, to see what's out there, and see who's capable. There's a lot of specificity in the RFQ, we're asking for, you know, middle school building experience, you know, and design experience related to schools, we're asking to talk, have firms show us demonstrated capabilities on sustainability efforts and building net zero, all those things, I mean, this is part of the, several meetings ago when we did the overview of the RFQ, we went into the details, so...
So we'll do that both for an architect, and then subsequently for a construction manager or general contractor, whatever.
Correct, it's, I think it's a, a good way to vet out, you're going to, you know, whenever the final decision is made, a construction process can last for a period of time, so it's almost like conducting a job interview, you want to meet, you want to talk, you want to get to know the folks that you're going to be working with for a couple of years as part of your team.
So, Matt, at any point in this process as outlined here, do we need to identify a site?
I think we're going to have to continue to talk about that. We put on the building aid application the two sites, one of them didn't work out, so right now we have one forty-four South Street. I think that's for future discussions with, obviously, the Capital Facilities and the board and the community.
I don't, Jim, I don't think that that's, at this point, I mean, at some point, absolutely, but just in term, determining qualifications, certainly the civil engineering portion is going to be really important, no matter where we go, so you want to make sure that they have highly qualified folks in that field, but I, I've done the RFQ before, and I found it really helpful to be able to have a better understanding of what was out there, so...
Probably some... Probably somewhat less important site-wise for the architect than for, you know, subsequent when we really get to having to build something, that's the difference.
I would, I would add, though, lead certification and green certification of the architects is critical, you know, experience in that, and demonstrated projects where they've actually designed them as well.
Thanks.
Okay.
Great. Sorry, Matt, for me to chase that back, but I just wanted to be clear that it was going to be, we were going to involve a lot of people.
So as Kathleen was talking about, there are four, or five, rather, LSRs out there that are related to building aid. I think on Monday night, we spoke about, that we've reached out to Amy Clark, and she gave us a breakdown of the list. It's a very long list of other LSRs, but these are specific to supporting building aid.
So I see Mary Jane Walner on the list, she's a Concord person, obviously.
Yeah, I've been, I've been talking to Mary Jane, and encouraging her to.
That's, that's great.
And I know that Jonathan has had an opportunity to speak with Michael Cahill. I believe Michael represents New Market.
My understanding is that he is interested in getting projects that went forward in years there wasn't building aid money available reimbursed.
Okay.
But I could be wrong.
That may be why he's, yeah, it could be, because New Market High School was in that period.
Yep.
Okay.
But I do know that Jonathan reached out to me.
Any, any other questions on that? Okay. So this is the part where we just want to talk about, it's like a dry run, just to let you know what we're thinking about. We, over Veterans Day this year, we replaced two of the 11 HVAC units, which are dehumidified air units. The goal is to replace the other nine, so we're able to use ESR funds to do that. There, we were hoping to do it for 2023, but the, there's a 52-week lead time for the electrical switchgear that is needed to support putting all these units on the roof for a full replacement. So there's going to be some pre-work that we'll do anyway, but we really should target summer of 2024. It's a time when, obviously, school's out, we would have loved to have done it this coming summer, '23, but the switchgear has to be in place, installed, and ready before we actually can power and support these units.
Will ESR funds still be available?
The ESR3 funds that this is coming out of, yes.
And are, do they currently have dehumidification that?
There was, the two that we installed do, and they're brand-new units, they're all train units, but the 11 that were existing, they were original mammoth units with no cooling capacity, similar to Broken Ground and various HVAC units up at the high school and with Runlet.
At Beaver Meadow, you mean?
Yes, Beaver Meadow.
Yes, what did I say, I'm sorry.
Broken Ground, yeah.
Sorry. So, I mean, this is part of, on a capital improvement plan, strategic plan, we talk about replacement, indoor air quality, getting better units, getting more cooling capacity, we're using our schools year-round, and you do notice a difference when you're going from Millbrook, which is physically connected to Broken Ground, when you're in the shoulder seasons or in the middle of summer, you do notice a difference. So this is one step forward to getting us where we need to be. Next to the pictures, I like to show a lot of pictures because I think they can help describe things. We, that's a picture of the side of, the south side of Krista McCullough School. So if you're familiar with that, we have the small pickup and drop-off lane that takes essentially a 90. You have the big entrance canopy that we took from the old, the stone from the Old Kimball School. So right underneath that, it's a, it's a very wet site. We have done some things over the years for mitigating the wetness there, dedicating separate drain lines, but we continually are having a problem. So I want, I'm looking, working with the civil engineer of record on this project to look at options. One could be installing, you know, more drainage and letting that side, which has been a natural path that people use, kids use, that is just basically caused by erosion and usage, and the grass hasn't been able to stabilize that area. So I want to just mention that that's an area that we need to address, so we're going to, we want to come back to you during the budget process, give you some options that the civil engineer recommends, and again, I think we're going to have a variety of different things to talk about of how we can mitigate that properly.
Well, it's funny, you know, there's a sidewalk there, and when the youngsters come off the bus, you know, they take the shortcut.
Well, yeah, the sidewalk winds.
Yeah, right, you can see how it winds around, and so, and our students just take the shortcut, which I get, you know, but it's caused a lot of erosion over there, and it's a mess, so Matt wants to do something about it.
Interesting. Some kids sledding, bodies sledding down there.
An interesting little fact, there is roughly a 13-foot elevation drop between Rumford Street and North Spring Street. So when we were building this, and we were, you know, digging for the foundations, that soil, they call it Spring Street for a reason, it's a very wet, blue glacial till area, so I wanted to bring.
There's a lot of that in Concord.
There is.
There's a lot of that.
Beaver Meadow School, it built in 1986, and this is one of the side entrances, the lower level there is the bottom level, to the right is the gym. The upper level, where you see the railing, is the upper service area, the kitchen is on the left. And so over time, that's a can-levered concrete structure, which has settled over time, and so what has happened is, I've had it analyzed, so structurally it's sound, but we have a gap on the edge where the brick is, so it's, it's, you know, in the, it's heavy traffic flow for people coming into the school. We salt and sand it, and that salt and sand melts, and it gets down, so we're going to need to look at this project to see how we can control the moisture, the water, get it directed in another direction, level things up a little bit. So that's another project I want to bring forward to you during budget season to discuss.
Matt, there's been repairs, and there's been sinkholes in some of those drains that are around this school, is there, is there an issue with the overall drainage plan on there? I can see one big drain in the middle, but I also know there's another drain to the right that has had some issues.
Yep, immediately to the right of that picture, there has, up front, there's been, we've had to restore two or three catch basins, we took out, over the last three to five years, we've taken out the sidewalk on both sides and replaced with pavement and granite, because the previous just had asphalt, bitumen, and scurbing, and so that washed, you know, kind of an undertow a little bit. So, long-range, Jim, yes, we need to look at a new site drainage plan, but I think we want to couple that with a potential new revision of how we have traffic flow and bus flow in there anyway, so it would make for an all-around good project down the road, and it's on the.
Thank you. My only concern is, is that if we do repairs to the service area and all, but the drainage program, plan is still not good, are we going to be looking at repairs again in another four years or something like that?
No, I don't think so. I think for this specifically, I mean, we're going to need to address the drainage for the entire site down the road, but I think for this particular one, I want to, I want to clean it up and fix it, and grab hold of that water that's naturally going to be there, and redirect it properly to the, to the right drainage, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Concord High School, we have four exterior speakers, so some of the things we want to look at is increasing the amount of speakers outside, I should say, so when we make general announcements, or if we go into lockdown and there's people, there's students outside, we want to make sure we've got good coverage around the building. So that's one thing. We also have a storefront unit, if you will, above the CRTC entry of the high school off of South Brew Street, and we've had some difficulties with the window in there, it's showing fatigue and signs of failure. We are up there constantly trying to plug leaks, other leaks come in, so I've had folks come in and take a look at what a total cost would be to replace that window, window composition. Just to give you an idea, the catwalk, everyone's familiar with the high school, the catwalk is of the same vintage as those windows, and we replaced all those catwalk windows back three years ago. So as we see the need, and we, we are getting leaks from this roof that we can't, you know, we mitigate for a while, and they come back on a different rainstorm or ice, we want to address that as well.
Just going back to the speakers, and I know you're going to talk about safety upgrades in a moment, but are there funds available for safety upgrades, including like the speakers that we're talking about?
There are. You know, we have contingency monies, there's grant monies out there. As you, as you know, we think 91 districts were awarded the safe grant monies just recently in November. Unfortunately, we didn't, we did get the first round for additional cameras at Runlet Middle School, and that's going to happen this year, this, the school year when they come in. But we're working with Ellen, our grants manager, talking with Jack all the time, with Kathleen, and we're always looking and pursuing other avenues for money, and I think there are some opportunities, there's some good potentials out there that we could also update.
And just one more question before we go on. I don't see anything about, I know that I want to put good money after bad, but I don't see anything for Runlet in any of this, and are there, depending on timing of possible replacement, are there things that the board should be aware of coming up, they're going to have to be addressed at Runlet until we do something about a new middle school?
So obviously, you know, we, we have leaks there. We, last summer, we had our roofing company come, and they patched and did some, some work. There are roof enhancements and repairs that we're going to have to look at doing, but we're going to, but as we're walking through this process, we have to talk and review and show you what our recommendations are. The, you walk through some of the hallways, and some of the tiles are chips, and so if we get into that, and we get into a full scale, that becomes pretty expensive. Hardwood floors for the basketball, you know? So there are things, I didn't list.
I encourage us to do as little as possible, but to do what we have to do.
Understood, and, and, and that goes without saying, we will, but I, in preparing for this presentation, we wanted to just kind of give a general overview, we weren't going to review every single project during the budget, and there's a lot of decisions that have to be made, safety of which, I think we're going to talk again at length with the board about some safety recommendations as well, so. Is that good?
Matt, there's, I know in the past that Runlet, sort of following up on what Mr. Cotton said there, Runlet has had restroom issues, they take a lot of very significant wear and tear, you know, there has been, sometimes there's an issue with abatement associated with that. What is the status of the restrooms at Runlet right now? Are there any that are closed? Are there any that are in serious need of repair, or even, you know, moderate need of repair?
So moderate repair, yes, there are some original vintage bathrooms that are multi-stall bathrooms, and I think we've taken people through and shown them. Do they, could, you know, would it be good if we were going to stay there in that building? Absolutely. Tear it, tear the hole inside, replace it like we have in other multi-stall bathrooms, but because a lot of that underneath the tile and in the walls contains hazardous materials, you're adding, adding, to do that, you're adding an extraordinary price tag. So there might be a stall in a multi-bathroom that may have to be closed off, allowing other stalls to be used, but we dig into that, and you start digging into the asbestos and the other materials, and then you're into an extremely big project. But we, when we hear about them, if we hear about a door coming off, or falling off, or being taken off, we, with our maintenance crew, we get right out there, and we try to address it. We, any plumbing issues, we have on-call plumbing contractor that we call whenever there's an issue. So kind of to Bob's point, we're trying to do the best we can to keep everything open and running.
I appreciate that, I just want to make sure that, you know, kids need to have bathrooms that they can use.
Absolutely.
And they need to be in the various sections of the, of the building, they can't be all the way down near the multipurpose room or something like that. I just want to make sure then, and when you walk in, there needs, you know, you can't have all the stalls blocked off or anything.
Right.
So I just want you to please update the board in case a situation like that occurs, or where, you know, it's, it's creating a hardship for students.
I definitely will. Kathleen and I communicate many times during the day, Paulette, the staff over there, so we definitely would, Jim.
Thank you.
Sure. And then again, just to touch upon briefly, we want to talk about safety upgrades in the future, we want to talk about a, just the possibility of a landscape maintenance plan. It's a very large school district in New Hampshire, and it's, we're, we're, we do have some labor issues as far as shortages, so we're trying to, schools are getting a lot of use, so we're putting a lot of concentration on keeping the insides clean, but I, I want to bring something forward when we get through the budget process, that we need to put some attention to the outside, and keep them maintained, cleaned, presentable, and we'd like to see it look better than it does now.
Yeah, I've had some people comment, you know, the weeds are getting pretty high in some instances.
This summer, I don't know about your home, but this summer, the weeds were incredible, and I think that's where Matt and I were saying, you know, we, we had staff going out weeding, and, you know, we did, that, that's not going to be a proper way to maintain it. And, you know, I always say, people judge a book by its cover, and, you know, if it's not pristine, then people are concerned, so.
It doesn't have to be pristine, but it, it does need maintenance and upkeep, and...
And, you know, on that too, it's, it's more than just mowing the lawn, it's also making sure the trims and the shrubs are away a certain distance, it's not blocking any mechanical, mechanical equipment. So it's, it's encompassing, but it's stuff that needs to happen that we want to be looking at during the budget process.
Although, if we're talking about the cosmetic stuff, I'd love to see if there's a way to get students involved in, you know, in some of the projects. I know... I know, like, at Krista McCullough, the kindergarten classes do spring flowers along the, and it's nice.
Exactly.
Well, and the other thing I want to just, and I know I probably don't need to say this to you, but just as we go through these plans, please keep an eye or a mind the, you know, use of chemicals or anything that, you know, I don't want to pretend to cause any sort of issues with our students or staff or neighbors.
Absolutely. I mean, that goes without saying. Most of these are safe green pesticides, but we definitely would do that. And while we're on the subject of chemistry, one of the things I want to also introduce when we get into the budget process is all of the water that is in our closed-loop mechanical boiler systems, they should be treated with water chemistry. So I want to look at a consistent maintenance plan to do that. You know, we're looking at some stuff to do at Beaver Meadow this coming summer, where the couplings, over time, the water, it, it roads. Putting a water chemistry maintenance plan in motion, it extends the life of our, of our ancillary equipment and pipes and pumps that support the heating in the, in the building, so.
So this is an anti-corrosion chemistry?
It would be an anti, it would be testing the pH, making sure that you have the proper balance. It, it, you know, by doing that, it doesn't have effects on other components and pumps down the road, as well as couplings and other components in the heating system. Any questions?
Because you mentioned it, the wear and tear on the buildings, and Mr. Richards and I had had a conversation about this, I, I don't know if it's this committee or finance, but I think there's some interest in just looking at our facility rental agreements to make sure that they cover our costs and that we are adequately insured.
Jack and I, glad he popped in, we, we have been talking about that. We want to look to bring to the board to update those costs to be more, you know, so that we can cover the wear and tear a little bit better. But I think that would be, whether it's a finance or it's a joint finance facilities committee, that would be, that's a topic we've talked about bringing forward.
So, yes, I'd encourage that, if you have time to work on that for this budget season, I mean, it's great time.
It's definitely on the list.
Thank you.
Any, yeah.
So we've covered our key buildings or some of our key buildings here, but we have properties, the other properties that we haven't talked about that may not be in use by the students at this point, but I'm curious as to the, you know, maintenance levels, and Eastman comes to mind, and whether or not there are issues there that we need to be aware of. So there may be others as well, such as storage areas or whatever.
So talk about Eastman for a minute. That's about 16,000 square feet. We rent it to Boys and Girls Club, a head start. As with any building, those windows are getting older. The, the roof, we did, we had a pretty significant windstorm a couple of years ago, and it was a, the roof rolled up on us, so we had to do an emergency roof repair. So those buildings are still maintained by the district. Again, we're, we're trying to maintain all of it, and I think to Kathleen's point, that's why we, we want to take a deeper look at how can we maintain, bring them up to the level that they need to be, but also maintain those properties until a decision's made to do something different with it.
I was going to say, is there a long-term plan on...
Well, you know, you have to consider other properties, the White Farm properties, the maintenance shed that Matt has, uses and houses our maintenance staff along with some heavy, you know, heavy-duty equipment. So there are, it isn't just about our seven schools in this district. Matt, we talk, Matt and I, I was smiling because Matt and I just talked about this, and, you know, what properties do you want to hold on to? I think this committee or one of our committees needs to consider, you know, what do we do? We have properties like White Farm and, and, and the Sea Project out there, we have the Maintenance Shed, we have Eastman Building and this building. What, what do you really want to do over time? And, you know, I say this building because maybe this building and the work, what we do here can be in another building. Maybe it could be part of the new building project, you know, so that you're, you're not, you're not running another building. But I think those decisions are going to, they're around the corner for the board.
I'm not sure whether it's our committee, maybe it is, but...
It may be a joint committee?
It probably is a joint committee.
I know we had, Finance Committee had asked that we get a discussion of that on the agenda, so I think it would be good to have a property.
I, I might suggest, and I, we, we won't know exact everybody's membership, but maybe that's a good topic for your retreat. I'm in the process right now of putting your agenda for, together for that, and it comes quick, and so, you know, that may be a topic. We have safety, Matt mentioned that, we want to do a presentation around safety. I've discussed just yesterday with your, your legal attorney for the district, Dean Egger, to come in, and, you know, we have new board members, it's always good to review the roles and responsibilities of board. I, I know, Jim, you've always been advocating for that, so this could be another topic for you. It's a time when you can have those discussions and consider your properties, and we'll bring you all that data, you know, what size is this school, where is it located, what's the value?
Yeah, and, and not necessarily just the, the buildings, but, I mean, the, the district owns other property that we ought to consider, whether we want to continue to hold it and be liable for it.
There are considerations, one of the concerns we have up at the high school, and Jack and Matt have both drove me around in that whole area, and we talked about areas for parking, is no place to go. We've got buses on top of cars, and, and so we're looking at the properties around that school and the parking lot and so forth, what we might be able to access to help us with that, because as you all know, I don't have to tell you what a, what a tight quarters that area is, so.
I think it's a reasonable topic to, to bring up, you know, with everybody, but I, I do think that maybe we ought to schedule this committee and the Finance Committee to go a little more in-depth if Pam is...
I agree.
I agree too. I think we, at our retreat, we'll be able to, we would be able to talk...
In general.
General or on a big picture type of things, but I think some of these topics are going to take some time to explain, okay, this is our revenues, this is our projected expenses. Bob brings up an outstanding point about liabilities. I think that's, that's a topic that we haven't touched on in depth in a little while, and I think it's a good thing to look at soon.
The other topic, just to, you know, in case your list is feeling a little short there.
I'm not ready to turn to the next page.
And, you know, again, crosses committees, but I, you know, the board had asked about some information on our, the use of our facilities for athletics, both in the building and outside the building, particularly our relationship with the city, as we think about our needs for the future. You know, starting, starting with some good data on who's using what would be really helpful.
Okay.
And who we charge and who we don't.
We have that, we can definitely provide that.
Yeah, we have it all, yeah. Remember to do that.
And to the extent that we know whether we're using, when and how we're using city facilities, including Memorial Field for our athletics, I think, and events, I think that would be helpful.
Memorial Field, Everett Arena.
And we use the Capital Arts, Capital Arts Center we use for our concerts at the high school.
And we pay for that, too.
And we have to pay for that.
Yep.
It's expensive.
Well, that's not a city facility, I don't think.
Oh, that isn't owned by the city?
No, Capital Center is the audio.
Oh, okay, I was thinking of the other one.
You know, this committee, in conjunction with the City Affairs Committee or whatever it's called, should start looking at, you know, who has what, who wants what, who wants to get rid of what, and, you know, see if we can come up with some... Yeah, get on the same page as our long-term needs and wants for them, which we assume is pretty close, but we really need to compare. I mean, in discussions with people on the City Council, they're, they're more than happy talking to us about who should have Memorial Field, for example. We ought to, we ought to do something about that.
If we want Memorial Field.
Well, that's a different issue, too. Yeah, yeah.
If it's at once in 2030.
Memorial's small. Sorry. Memorial's small.
You'll get history.
Any other questions?
Thanks very much, Matt. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Nice job.